Rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice in all.
Please remain standing. Have a moment of silence for departed board member, friend to the community, and an icon to this community, and he'll be deeply missed, Raymond, trustee Raymond Matthews. Rest in peace, our friend. We have a motion for the acceptance of the minutes of the February twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries unanimous. Public forum? We have no one for this evening. Then go on to presentations. Ms. Angela Urbina Medina, accountability update.
Much better. So this evening, I'm going to provide for you an overview of our 2018-2019 accountability status. And I'm going to begin with a brief walk down memory lane. So every student succeeds is the federal law that provides public school districts with guidance on funds that they receive. And every student succeeds is the third initiative that I can recall working under in my career in education. The first being No Child Left Behind, followed by Race to the Top. So to give you some perspective on where this fits in, this is the third umbrella federal initiative for school districts to use for guidance purposes. In 2015, Every Student Succeeds as an Act came into being, and in 2018, New York State adopted what their version of and their response to would be. Working between two screens here. In December of 2018, our school district received notification that we had a preliminary identification. So school districts are given information about their accountability status, and they have the opportunity to verify whether or not the data is accurate, speak to any anomalies or situations that were unique that year that might have impacted the state's identification of the school district, and look at the information that is part of how the determination is made and determine whether or not it's valid. Our school district received a preliminary identification that prompted the submission of an appeal. So in December, I put together a appeal and submitted it following the timeline to Albany. And Dr. Corey, our district superintendent, gave voice to that appeal, and the appeal was granted. And as a result, we were deemed to be in good standing. So our school district is in good standing, and all three of our buildings for eighteen nineteen are in good standing, which is a good thing. However, you'll see that next to good standing, I have a little asterisk there. And this is the same presentation that I included in my report. We were notified in mid-January that our status was good standing and that our appeal had been granted, which is, as I mentioned, is a positive thing. But because we had a preliminary identification, that is the reason why there is a designation that we might potentially be in nineteen-twenty facing identification for one or more subgroups. So we're in good standing right now, but we have concerns about the upcoming school year. Under Every Student Succeeds, there are new accountability categories. And one of the things that I've learned over the last two months where I've been working my way through some of this information is the depth of detail involved. And I'm going to try really hard not to go deep here. But I, what I would like to do is provide you with enough information so that you have a general idea, and any one of you is willing to come and sit with me and my charts, and we can wade into the water together. So these are the new accountability categories. Composite performance, which is the academic achievement in ELA in mathematics and also in science. This is how students perform every year in those content areas. Student growth in ELA in mathematics is the growth that our students achieve on state assessments and their yearly assessments in ELA in math. Progress of our Ls towards English language proficiency, how our students are performing on the NICE-SLAD exam, working their way from the lowest tier all the way out to being expanding and transitioning. Academic performance in ELA in mathematics. Here we have where, where our students are in relation to other students in the state. Chronic absenteeism, the percentage of our student population that is deemed chronically absent, students that miss ten percent or more days of the school year. With a hundred-and-eighty-day year would be eighteen school days. College career and civic readiness. Here we're looking at where students are when they leave high school, how prepared they are for college and career, and the graduation rate for students when they enter ninth grade for four, five, and six-year cohorts. For each one of these categories, we receive a rank of one through four. And the objective is generally to be in, in the level fours and have fewer level ones. I put together this diagram that kind of maps out the pathway. And as you can see, we have really two paths. You can either be a good-standing district with good-standing schools, or you can be a target district and have schools either designated comprehensive support and improvement or targeted support and improvement. If you have any school that falls under either one of those categories, comprehensive support and improvement or targeted, the district itself is a target district. For the nineteen-twenty school year, we face potentially a district identification because of several subgroups that have issues, and those issues could be related to any one of the accountability categories. Our students with disabilities, our Black and Hispanic students, our white students, and our economically disadvantaged students. The elementary and middle school have potential identification for targeted support and intervention for the subgroups that are identified here. If you're looking at the two potential identification categories, comprehensive support or targeted support, targeted support, districts are really kind of on their own. There is a roadmap, a tool that we are given that we can use to sort of self-assess, but the assistance, the intervention from the state is very, very limited. It's when a school receives a designation of comprehensive support that the level of scrutiny and the conversations are a lot more frequent. How are schools identified? A school can be identified as a TSI if one or more subgroups performs at level one on a combination of the new indicators that I provided a couple of slides previous. If a school had been in good standing, then it takes two years of low performance before the school becomes a TSI school. The definition of comprehensive support is below. A school can be identified as CSI because the school performs at level one on a combination of the new indicators, or for high schools, or if any of the subgroups in the graduation rate is less than sixty percent. Beginning in eighteen-nineteen, New York will identify every three years at least five percent of schools statewide as CSI. So if you're identified as a TSI school, what happens? Well, as I already mentioned, we have to go through a process of doing a self-assessment, and it's, the self-assessment then becomes an improvement plan where you're going to identify areas that through your group of constituents require improvement. And the improvement plan will include one school-wide strategy. One of the aspects of ESSA that is emphasized is the collaborative conversations, the inclusion of parents and students as part of the decision-making. If a school does not improve after several years, your school could be classified as CSI, which is the comprehensive support and intervention. The CSI schools, you're still performing the same sort of task, the survey, the improvement plan. The improvement plan is, of course, shared with all constituents. You're inclusive again with parents and student voices. If you do not improve over several years, additional action steps can be required, and with the worst-case scenario being a school being put into receivership. So now what? We have been in the process, really since this information was shared with us, looking at data, all kinds of data. Student performance data, absenteeism data. We have had conversations on the district level. We have also had conversations that have included support from Ulster Boses, Dr. Corey, the data analyst services through Ulster Boses. We've spent a lot of time looking at ways that we can identify short and long-term goals, looking at student attendance and student engagement, looking at making sure that we are providing sufficient rigor, looking at the analysis of where students are falling short and what we can do on the short term. For example, in one of our administrative meetings, we talked about student responses with regard to constructed response, where students can receive two or four points on their ELA or math test. And what we found was that many of our students are not attempting to answer these questions, and as a result, aren't maximizing the number of points that they could receive. So in the middle school and elementary school, the building principals worked with the staff in both of those buildings on providing them with additional resources so that they could work on this particular skill, this aspect of the assessment between now and the time that students are tested. We've also spent a great deal of time, and I know Mrs. Wiles can speak to that, about looking at student attendance. We really have to emphasize, as a school community, the importance of being here. There is no replacement for the time that's lost, and it may seem as though one or two days here or there isn't going to make much of a difference or isn't that big a deal. It really is over the course of time. And when you're not here, the information that you, you don't receive, there's no substitute for that. It can't be made up. So we have to emphasize the importance of being in attendance. We have a lot of work ahead, and I know that we're all committed to having us maintain good standing. So we're going to continue this conversation throughout this year, certainly well into next year, and I look forward to following up with a positive report, hopefully not in the too distant future.
Thank you, Ms. Urbina Medina. And is there any questions from the board? John?
Thank you, Angela. We know the state's always watching, as is evidenced by the flickering lights. Could you tell us what percentage of our students are considered to fall under chronic absenteeism right now?
We're probably looking at, it depends, the data is broken out building to building, and I certainly don't want to speak offhand. I would prefer to come back with the data, but I'll give you, I can, yeah, I can provide that another time, absolutely.
The other question I had was, in the eighteen-nineteen school year, the state will identify every three years at least five percent of all state schools as CSI. Those of us who've been in education for a long time always are very suspicious whenever the state gets involved. It would seem to me that they're reporting five percent of schools as CSI to go against their own state initiative acronym of ESSA, where every student succeeds. So I hope that we can stay out of that category so as not to fall in the five percent that they are finding. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? If not, thank you very much. And we'll now move on to reports and information correspondence. For myself, just want to say this, I'm going to discuss just quickly, this morning, as you aware, we had a, there was a major drug raid dealing with the distribution of opiates in the Allenville area and the surrounding area beyond Allenville. And it got me to thinking, I was talking to the sheriff this afternoon, and we need to make sure that just enforcement, mere enforcement, as you know, for opiate addiction and opiate suppliers, while they, they counteract each other, certainly there's not enough. I think we need to make sure that we have education and awareness, and I think we need to take a look at our, what's being taught as far as what we're presenting to our middle school and our high school children, as far as the awareness of opiate addiction and the dangers of opiate, opiate usage and addiction. I think that needs to be presented somehow, taking a look at how we can present that effectively throughout our classrooms in the middle and high school levels. It's very important. Sometimes it's, we, we talk about it way too late, or it's a discussion that we shy away from, but it's, it's a problem. It's epidemic levels and proportions in our society, and we certainly need to address that in our educational settings to make people, because awareness plays a key role in whether a person chooses to use or not to use. And certainly, we'd like to see all our children be educated when it comes to that dangerous topic. Something you could look into, superintendent?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, thank you. Other than that, I have nothing else. Board members? Trustee Story?
Yeah, I would like, if we can either have a conversation with the local papers or put out some articles ourselves or something, there seems to be some articles that I'm reading that are just not factual. And I think that as, as community members are reading them, you know, I'm being asked a lot of questions about graduation rates and other things, and, you know, the facts have to be given, it can't just be one-sided. So I would like us to find a way to get the facts out to the public in a quick and respective manner. Thank you.
Absolutely. We'll look into that.
Yeah.
Anybody else this evening? Not, we'll move on to our student representative. Hello?
Hi. So today, I'm just going to go over a couple key events that happened. Heat versus Magic took place, and all proceeds are going towards the leukemia and lymphoma society, and it was hosted by student council. College Biosymposium took place and will continue tomorrow on various interesting topics. The students worked really hard. Upcoming is arena scheduling, and I believe the date was changed, so it's to be determined. Junior/Senior Day is coming up very soon. It's either in April or May. Sports, spring sports are underway, and the teams are very excited to go to practice. Honor Society essays were handed in, and the induction will be taking place very soon, and students will find out whether they made it or not. Fundraisers, right now, the junior class is selling Gertrude Hawk, and Regents prep is about to start very soon because the Regents exams in June are coming up, so the teachers will be staying after at least one day a week to go over the material. And students, like juniors, are starting to prepare for their SATs if they haven't already taken them because we just had junior appointments. So thank you, that's all I have today.
Thank you very much. Superintendent Wiles?
A few things. In your packet, there was a conflict for the Meet the Candidate PTO slash NAACP date. There was the ninth of May and the sixteenth of May, and it is actually the sixteenth of May. You can just modify your calendars for that. Petitions for available seats on the Board of Education will be available to be picked up in the central office on April eighth with a returnable date of April twenty-second. There are three seats open, and the budget vote is Tuesday, May twenty-first. The voting will be here in the library, eight AM to eight PM. On Friday morning, the elementary school has a treat in store. All of our athletic teams to date that have made the Mahal Championships or the Section Nine, including our individual athletes, will be doing a walkthrough in the elementary school to see all of our athletes and celebrate their success, kind of like what we do for graduation. But this is going to be, we're trying to build another tradition in. We missed the fall, but we'll do the fall and the winter on Friday, and I believe that's going to happen between nine and nine-thirty. If board members want to attend, just check into our office, let us know so we can let the elementary school know that you'll be there. Next Tuesday, at the beginning of the board meeting at seven-thirty, there'll be representatives from the senior class and the class advisors for the board to have their yearbook picture taken here next Tuesday night. So that's So that's going to happen next Tuesday. And the last thing I want to talk about are snow days. So as we approach the end of March, right now, we have five snow days left. We actually worked this past week on recounting our days, recounting hours and minutes and all of that, and it seems we're definitely within the requirements from the state. When I say hours and minutes, I'm talking about the requirements and the mandates that the state put in this year. So all things, if all things remain the same, we'll have, of the five snow days, we'll have three days to give back. The three days to be given back will be Monday, April twenty-second, May twenty-fourth, which is the Friday before Memorial Day, and the Tuesday after Memorial Day. And these are tentative right now. We just got another report today that there might be some inclement weather, nothing that should cause a snow day in the next two days, but there's, they're saying that there's going to be, you could pick that up, I'm just telling you what the information I got from it. I'm sick of getting the alerts. But as long as we don't have, it wasn't fleet, as long as we don't have any major blizzards coming between now and April twenty-second, we'll definitely be giving that date back. Information will go home to parents, and we'll have it posted on all of our communication mediums. But it's tentative right now, and we'll release that information as a confirmation for the twenty-second, probably the first week in April. But that's what we're looking at right now. And we'll see, we'll tentatively add back the twenty-fourth and twenty-eighth, but if there's, it's not just snow that we have our emergency closings for. We know we had a day right as schools started for, you know, an event that happened in the community, so we, we're just, we're tentatively and optimistically looking at those days being, being able to be added back. And that's all I have this evening.
Thank you.
So tonight, I'm just going to do a brief overview on some of the updates that have happened since the last time I did a budget presentation. So overall, the budget is up two point two-one percent. The tax cap remains at one point three-six percent. Three major changes that I'd like to point out, they're on the second slide of the presentation that, that you have, but it's also up on the screen, is that some of the special education costs have gone down based on annual reviews and some of the tuition expenses that, that we were getting. That's always subject to change over the summer. We have added about eighty-five thousand dollars to recondition and take care of our softball and baseball fields. We had somebody come in and give us a price a couple of years ago, so we're anticipating some escalation costs on that, but that's to take care of the hop at the outside of the infield and some drainage issues. So I think a lot of the ballplayers will be happy about that. And then one of the bigger numbers is that we got our finalized numbers from our health insurance company. There, it's actually down, I was budgeting just a little over eight percent. It came in on average around six percent, so that, that's something that is reflected here as well. The next slide is just for the details, if anybody wants to look at it, they can compare the last, last presentation to this one so they can actually see which line items changed. I'm not going to go through them line by line here, but that's really just for someone that wanted to take it, take a moment to look at it. On April ninth, we will do a full budget review. We won't go line by line, but we'll go department by department, and I'll report on any changes that we might have occur between now and then. I do expect some, not that many. If we do see some increases in state aid, we might add some lines, increase some of the appropriations. April twenty-fourth, the board will adopt the budget, and then on May twenty-first, like the superintendent said, there will be a budget vote here in the high school media center from eight AM to eight PM. Thank you.
I just want to make one comment about the state budget. The information that we've been getting in preliminarily, usually, we can, in the past few years, the budgets, the state budgets have always been on time. We're hearing that there's some conflict and obstacles at the state level, and we're not sure we're going to have a budget by April first. So we'll have to see where we're going, and by April ninth, we should have more of, of an indication on where we are. We might even have more of an indication next Tuesday when we meet. So we'll keep you in the loop with all of that.
Thank you. Deputy Superintendent, Ms. Angela Urbina Medina.
I have nothing additional to report.
Thank you. We'll move on to personnel resolutions. Six point one, upon the recommendation, Superintendent of Schools be resolved that the following salary reclassification, graduate credits and degrees as stipulated in ETA contract be approved and prorated effective two one nineteen.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries unanimous. Six point two, uncertified substitute teacher, upon the recommendation, Superintendent of Schools be resolved that John Livingston be appointed uncertified substitute teacher at a rate of ninety-five dollars per day of work for the two thousand eighteen nineteen school year.
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries unanimous. Six point three, upon the recommendation, Superintendent of Schools be it resolved that Casey Livingston be appointed certified substitute teacher at a rate of one hundred and twenty-five dollars per day of work for the eighteen nineteen school year.
So moved. Second.
Moved, seconded, any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries unanimous. Six point four, upon the recommendation, Superintendent of Schools be resolved that Angela Younger be approved as a one-to-one aide to attend before school activities with student number two five seven one-two as needed at a rate of seventeen eighty-nine per hour work for eighteen nineteen school year.
So moved.
Been moved.
Second.
Seconded, discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries unanimous. Six point five, disciplinary settlement, upon the recommendation, Superintendent of Schools be resolved that the disciplinary settlement between the Allenville Central School District and employee number one six four eight be approved.
So moved.
It has been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries unanimous. Onto legals, seven point one. Cooperative bidding. Anybody want to move that?
So moved.
Why don't you just introduce it and we'll, and we'll move it.
It is, it is.
Just the first line.
Yeah, we'll just introduce it. It's the desire of the participating school districts of the Board of Cooperative Educational Services, Ulster County, adopting this resolution to jointly request bids for certain commodities to be determined by the superintendent of School District from time to time for the nineteen twenty school year.
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries unanimous. Student IEPs, be it resolved, the attached list of student IEPs be acknowledged as appropriate, there are thirty-nine.
Moved the list.
It's been moved and seconded. Any, any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries unanimous. Eight point two, Memorial Award, resolve that the Joan Beck Memorial Award, awards rather, two in the amount of five hundred dollars each be established pursuant to the terms and criteria designed by the donor.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries unanimous. Eight point three, resolve that the following volunteer be approved for the eighteen nineteen school year.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries unanimous. Eight point four, new course proposal. Resolve that the following new high school course proposals be approved. Supa United States History one oh one, Principles of Sports Management twelfth, general elective; Principles of Sports Management eleventh and twelfth, general elective, option two; United States History through film, Supa Course twenty twenty dash twenty twenty-one. Been moved? Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Ms. Freeman.
I'm just wondering if at this time, the superintendent can clarify for me the differences between those two sports management courses. I was having a hard time deciphering what we were talking about here.
I am. I'm going to defer to Mr. Urbina Medina.
So the sports management, general elective, would be the course that is offered possibly in the nineteen twenty school year, depending on interest, and that would be determined at arena scheduling. It's, it is going to be sort of the soft opening, and depending on the buzz about the course, that would be what we would use to determine whether or not we wanted to go all in on a Supa course.
Oh, so one is a general and the other is a Supa.
That's correct.
So which one, which one is which? I wasn't clear.
So the, the one that's identified as general elective.
Right.
And the other one is a potential Supa course for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one.
So that's eleventh and twelfth grade?
Correct.
But what we're offering is strictly for twelfth grade?
For next year.
Trying it out.
Yes.
Okay, I see. Okay.
All right, thank you.
Question? Is, is that sport management course dependent on a teacher, or we will have that?
It's dependent on student interest.
But is that going on?
We won't have to hire another teacher.
No, oh, no, no.
Any other questions? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries unanimous. Eight point five, textbook purchase. Resolve the following textbooks be approved for purchase, Changing the Land, Never Been Caught, Principles and Practice of Sports Management.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in, oh, Iris?
I just have a request that when textbooks are to be approved, that we get a heads-up a little bit ahead of time if we want to look through them.
Sure.
Um, I, I know that it was in here, but even more than just a few days before the meeting would be helpful.
Okay.
Because we all can't, you know, come necessarily.
Sure, it's not a problem.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
What, what is the, is Never Been Caught or Never Caught, is that the title of a textbook? The title of a textbook?
Yes, that's correct.
That is the title.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries unanimous. Onto nine, Construction.
Motion to move nine point one and nine point eight.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to move nine point one through nine point eight. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries unanimous. Under other, ten point one.
Motion to move ten point one through ten point five. Second.
It has been moved and seconded to move ten point one through ten point five. Any discussion?
Yes, sir, I'd like to pull the donation, I think that should be recognized.
Okay, we have, we're going to move that donation, I need to have an amendment, a motion to amend, the motion to exclude ten point four.
So moved.
So moved.
And seconded, okay, and that's what we'll do. The motion will move ten point one, ten point two, ten point three, and ten point five. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries unanimous. Under ten point four, resolve that a donation from Applied Materials Foundation in the amount of two hundred dollars for the wrestling program be accepted.
So moved.
Moved and.
Second.
We have a second? Yep, moved and seconded. Any discussion on this?
Can we just clarify where it's coming from because it was a mystery for a while.
Vince, you want to talk about it?
Yeah, I'm trying to remember.
Well, we have, there's an employee that works at Applied Materials Foundation who's a graduate of the Allenville School District, and there's a matching program there where they can request that donations be sent to an organization. So this individual requested that two hundred dollars be sent to the school district, and then when we said, was there an area that he'd like to apply to, he said the wrestling program. So that's the history behind this donation. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
I'd just like to say that I think that this is a great thing that our kids think about us after they move on from our building.
Yes.
To not only think about us, but take advantage of an organization that does matching funds to, to kick back money or donate money to the school. I apologize, I didn't mean that.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries unanimous. Anything that anybody would like to see on next week's agenda for the next meeting?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
I, I mentioned to Mr. Napoli that I appreciate the fact that it's the first day of spring and the air conditioning was working very well when we came in. If we could just adjust the climate control for when we come into the meetings, I'd appreciate that, thank you.
I have already issued the email. Thank you.
Any further items?
Mr. President?
Yes?
Madam Superintendent, do we anticipate having any additional information on the, the grant available for, I'm sorry, I'm having a complete blank, I'm having a complete blank.
For the Bosse's program?
Yeah, what is that called?
For the, the five-year program for the.
The PTEC?
PTEC, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah. So we will have an update tomorrow. Angela, Ms. Urbina Medina, myself, and Mr. Pavone are doing a site visit in Newburgh. Newburgh has a PTEC program, it's a school within a school, so that's more of a model that we're looking at. There's grant funds available, we're going to see if, and the grant writers going with us tomorrow to see if we can construct possibly a school here within our school. So we hope to have an update for you next Tuesday. I'm not sure that I can give you all the grant information next Tuesday, but we can definitely report back on what we see tomorrow.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent.
Any further items for next week? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor? Opposed? We're adjourned.